Call the March nineteenth city council meeting order. Commissioner Smith, if you give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day, please, sir.
Our Father and our God, we come once again for your presence to say thank you for another opportunity to be servants of your city. We ask heaven and father, you continue to bless us, God have a tongue, that we may do those things that are pleasing and acceptable in your sight. Bless all those in the chamber here tonight. These blessings we ask in thy son Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fact of the day, on March nineteenth nineteen sixteen, the first U.S. air combat mission in U.S. history begins when eight Curtis Kennedy planes of the first arrow squadron take off from Columbus, New Mexico. The first arrow squadron organized in nineteen fourteen after the outbreak of World War One was a support mission for the seven thousand U.S. troops who invaded Mexico to capture Mexican revolutionary Pernacho Villa. Fact of the day.
All right, need to read the decorum statement. Welcome to the public meeting at the city council, the city of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. The city council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may become for the council for action. If you wish to address the council this evening, please make sure you've filled out a card with your contact information and have presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address of record, organization, and direct your comment to the city council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The council and the city's staff encourages constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violations of these provisions may result in the issuance of a verbal warning, including warning for trespass. If violators persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from the council chambers. All right, we've got two sets of minutes, February nineteenth and March fifth. Any changes? If not, look for a motion to approve the two city council meetings. So got a motion by Commissioner Blasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Any changes to the agenda, Jacob? Okay, we've got six consent agenda items. Is there anyone from the dais or from the public would like to pull any of these items from the consent agenda? If not, look for a motion to approve the six consent agenda items. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. Chief.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. Tonight, I present Dr. Levita Quinn Henry as a selected candidate to fill the vacant deputy chief position within the Apopka Police Department. Following the retirement of Deputy Chief Miller in December of twenty twenty four, I initiated a thorough search to identify the most qualified individual for the critical leadership role. After reviewing resumes, conducting interviews, and engaging in discussions with my staff, we narrowed the selection to three highly qualified individuals. These candidates were interviewed by Mayor Nelson, who provided valuable feedback. Based on this input, my staff and I conducted an additional interview with Dr. Quinn Henry. After careful consideration and extensive discussions, we have selected Detective, doctor, I'm sorry, Quinn Henry for the deputy chief position. This was not an easy decision, but her extensive experience, education, qualifications, and residency in the city of Apopka made her the strongest candidate to serve as deputy chief and ultimately as the next chief of Apopka Police Department. Dr. Quinn Henry currently serves as deputy chief with the Orlando Police Department, where she has dedicated the past twenty-five years to law enforcement. Each of you received her biography and resume, which highlight her vast experience in leadership. As a graduate of Apopka High School, who grew up in Lockhart and currently resides in the city, her deep ties to the community further reinforce her commitment to the department and the residents of Apopka. In addition to her over twenty-five years in law enforcement, Dr. Quinn Henry's academic achievements include a bachelor's of arts in criminal justice, a master of science in public administration, a doctor of philosophy degree. She also graduated from Southern Police Institute's Command Officer Development Course, the Liberty University Criminal Justice Executive Leadership Class, and the FBI Federal Executive Development School. While the appointment of deputy chief does not require council approval, I am presenting an employment agreement for your consideration tonight. This agreement establishes the terms of Dr. Quinn Henry's employment, performance expectations, and provides assurance that she will transition into the role of chief of police upon my retirement. If approved, I will have the opportunity to work closely with Dr. Quinn Henry over the next several months as she transitions into her new role. This period will allow her to familiarize herself with the agency, its operations, and the dedicated personnel within the Apopka Police Department. Due to the necessary transition process from the Orlando Police Department, Dr. Quinn Henry's anticipated start date is May first of twenty twenty five. With your approval, I am confident that Dr. Quinn Henry will excel in leading the Apopka Police Department and will serve our community with dedication and distinction. I want to thank you for your time and consideration to this matter. Dr. Quinn Henry is here with us tonight. I'll ask her to step up here with me. We are both available to address any questions or comments that you may have.
All right, why don't you go ahead and give us a little of your background and then we'll open it up for questions from the council.
Thank you, mayor, commissioners, Chief McKinley. First of all, I want to say thank you all for allowing me to stand before the council tonight. I think Chief did an amazing job giving you a little bit of my history. I'm proud to say that I am an Apopka resident. I went to Apopka High School, class of eighty-eight. I am a grandmother whose granddaughter attends Apopka High School. So I'm super proud to say that this comes full circle. Giving twenty-five years of my life to the Orlando Police Department has been an amazing experience. And so I'm excited to be able to come to Apopka, my home, to serve as the next deputy chief and ultimately the chief of police. So I appreciate you all for having me here tonight.
Okay, any questions?
Well, I spent time with the deputy chief Levita when they were, when they were actually had candidates and you were the only one who made the effort to actually come and meet each one of us individually. And then after this election, you also made the effort, even though we spent a lot of time beforehand, you still made the effort to come back and, and speak to us and assure us of your service and that you were honored to have been the chosen, to be chosen for our police department. So, welcome.
Thank you.
And we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I just want to say that likewise, it was a pleasure to meet with you and sit down and have a one-on-one conversation with you and understand your background and what your plans are for the future of the city of Apopka. Very impressed and I'm glad to see that you're here tonight to assume this position. Congratulations.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesta?
Yeah, absolutely. And again, it's Commissioner Nesta. I know you have a hard time remembering that sometimes.
I said commissioner every time.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure you spoke about decorum.
Commissioner Nesta, you're next.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Decorum, sir, please. We had a great meeting together and I appreciate you taking the time. I think we budgeted an hour and it'll be an hour and forty-five minutes. So I appreciate you being patient with me. We spoke about a lot of just, you understand the historical context of our city and I think that's very valuable coming into this position because we're growing as a city. We have a lot of new residents. We also have many that have been here for many generations as well. So you, you provided a story as well, that was very cool and very, again, you just, you understand what's going on here in the city and I appreciate that. And I think it's very valuable that you live here as well. You understand that, being a DARTER as well, I mean, that, that's a big deal here locally, so I do appreciate that as well. And, and you know, I spoke about some of the concerns I had about the just employment agreement with you as well, that and with the chief of, how do we make sure that this isn't a waste of your time? You know, how do I make sure that this is as solid as possible, that we can get you into and make sure that you do become chief? That there's nothing else that slows it down or anything in that capacity? So, and, and it's my understanding that both the attorney, both our employment attorney and attorney Shepherd have reviewed this and you feel confident with this as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the, and the only thing that I would ask or maybe suggest to the council to think of is maybe, because you'd have to, we'd have to come back again in November to ratify you as chief, correct? Is that, is that accurate, that timeline?
No, because this contract is built in, this is your opportunity because the contract says she becomes chief. That's part of what you're agreeing to, so this is the ratification time.
Okay, good, that, so that was, we, then that's different than what the discussion I had then. So that's, that's what I want to hear.
Yes.
Thank you, so that was different than what we discussed.
As long as there's a date certain and, you know, my date certain at this particular point in time is October thirty-first, I will retire. So somewhere around November first, she will be sworn in, but she will be the chief based on this employment agreement.
Okay, so there's no additional anything that we need to make sure that she has this position locked in?
My only understanding from Mr. Shepherd is-
I just got a thumbs up from him.
If the council changes, which it shouldn't before October.
No, it, it, they would still be bound by this contract. Now, the termination is a whole other, we've obviously had discussion terminations multiple times, but no, this contract accounts for the charter by saying, this is your ratification because she will be the chief. That's the discussion. So if you want to talk about that, okay, but if you approve this contract, she's the next chief.
Okay, no, good. And again, that was what my concern was and we discussed that in our meeting as well, is how do we make sure that this is locked in properly? So how I kind of see this, and, and I would think that we can kind of move that you're, you're acting chief at this point, should you be ratified? That's how I would see this. That's the power of this contract effectively, is how I see that. So, so I'm, I'm, I'm excited for you, I'm happy for you, and I think there's a lot of good things ahead of us with you in the leadership seat.
Thank you. Okay. Sure.
We've spoken for several hours as well. I spoke with different community leaders, community stakeholders. The community is really excited to have you. Welcome, we look forward to, I know you can do, do amazing things, so welcome.
And just, I'll echo, I, I got a call from my good friend over in Orlando, the city of Orlando mayor, Buddy Dyer, and he says, hey, as much as I don't want to lose this, this superb employee, the city of Orlando says she would be a great asset to the city of Apopka. And I said, mayor, I think you're going to be happy with our selection. So he, he was excited to hear that, that, you know, for you, for your, your, you know, to grow and where, where you are. And so we're, we're so excited and, and to the contract, that was, you know, my, my, as, as chief, I tell you, that was something I want to have, make sure it was in place so that we, you know, we knew that she had the, the glide path to, to, to the chief and then, you know, hopefully, hopefully you're here for a long time. So we, we appreciate it and I know you've got some support. Yeah, if you'd like, why don't you mention some of your, some of the folks you've got here that are here in support of you?
Thank you, mayor. So I'm proud to say that I've brought, I've had some supporters from my sorority, from high school, from Orlando Police Department, and my new Apopka Police Department family, so yes. And my husband is, I can't forget my other half, my better half.
Yeah.
My husband is there in the audience.
Awesome.
I do want to point out that she, she did bring out the big one, Ms. Dean is here also.
So y'all know what that was like.
All right, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Yeah. It's a business item.
Dr. O. UCF? UCF? No, oh, that's right, we had another person that came on as UCF, yes. I looked over your credentials, your, your vitae was incredible. And I, I want y'all to know that her background is phenomenal and the way she has presented that vitae, you, we couldn't do any better. This is a phenomenal educated woman and she's had an incredible background in criminal justice. And I didn't see any, we didn't skip to see any resumes from anyone else, but to have someone in Apopka, from Apopka, that's, that's been here for adult life and to be able to receive someone like this, it doesn't matter, man, woman, or child, we've done excellent and I want to welcome her here and I feel that she's going to slip right into that big seat and do the best job running this city.
Sylvester. I want to say welcome, 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 welcome. And I'm gonna say this and to the whole police department. You guys provide a service to the people that is paramount and is second to none. So as a citizen, as a father, as a military veteran, there's nothing more honoring for me to have you come home to your loved ones every night. You should have the best of the best. Should have the best training, best training facilities, the best pension, and the best leadership. Our country, right now, we at a crossroad. We at a crossroad, whether we want to believe it or not, we at a crossroad. And the leadership of the police department, the leadership of law enforcement is on the front line. Now, there's a whole lot of things that you can measure when it comes to education, training, background, but these things, I want you to hold to your heart very dear because you can't measure these. You can't measure one's value in their training and the things they have walked in life. So I say to you, when I say these things, principle matters, integrity matters, honesty matters, accountability matters, responsibility matters, morals matters, ethics matters, character matters, procedures matters, leadership matters, laws matter, facts matter, the truth matters, family matters, and all God's people matters. So if you keep that near and dear to your heart when you trans, come into, I pray God for your strong leadership, you got my hundred percent backing, and I will say this. We start this meeting off with prayer. We started off with a pledge. And we say that pledge, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we know that's not true. We all know that's not true. But we don't form it in our heart. And we say it without understanding the impact of what we're saying. So tonight, I ask everybody in this room, let's make that a reality. Let's not be hypocrites, let's make that a reality. And Dr. Henry, I say again, you got my hundred percent report. Miss A, support, thank you so much.
Uh, Doc Henry, my name is Three Ward Bell. I'm also a veteran. The last, I spent the last ten days in Chicago. I just made it home this morning at ten o'clock. The whole while I was in Chicago, I was getting phone calls about Dr. Henry. Do you know Dr. Henry? I've been here since nineteen sixty-eight. They say you are native of Apopka. The last one calling me was Sylvester Hall. He said, well, you've been here for, since sixty-eight, you got to know this lady. I said, I don't know her. But what we did, we did our research and what I seen, I was impressed. I would ask you, the guy standing to your right, I never had anything for him, but here's the thing. The way that you police Apopka, we stand behind you a hundred percent. But the one thing that we ask, the road police officers that we have had here in Apopka, from the Proud Boys on up to guys tazing and beating people that in handcuffs. We ask that you hold the Apopka Police Department to the same standard that you would want the citizen to be. That's all we ask, that's all I ask. And I welcome you and I hope and I pray that you would have, and I believe this in my heart, I believe that you would have an open door policy and thank you for choosing to come home.
Hi Rod Olson, I'm a member of the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, one of the board members. And we have eighty members and we appreciate everything that you will be doing. Certainly the chiefs and all the officers that are here today are on the road today as well. Appreciate everything you do and want to know if we have our full, you have our full support. Anything we can do to assist you in any way, as we have extended to the chief, we're on, thank you.
Dr. Henry, my name's Dr. Jim Moyer. I live in Akali. I've been with the Citizens Advisory Council for the police department for years. I, I'm a veteran. I spent years in uniform. I also spent years in Salvation Army uniform. Just like the chief looks excellent in a chief's uniform, I'm certain you will. Congratulations and God bless you.
Anybody else? Uh-oh. Oh, boy. This could go one of two ways.
Very short. To the mayor, commissioners, city of Apopka, your police officers, and each and every one of you here tonight. I just want to take out the time and say how grateful that I am to see my wife make this move. I met this woman about twenty-three years ago and the very first thing she said to me, if I'm gonna be in your life, I'm gonna have to be the what's happening. Baby, you the what's happening. I've seen her work hard, I've seen her work twelve-hour shifts, come home, sleep for a few moments, get right back up and go out on a call. I was there for the last twenty-three years, in the rain, in the cold, while she was taking care of my kids, taking care of the house, taking care of me, taking care of the apartment, wanting to quit some days, but she was there. Apopka, she is the real deal. Now, why do I say that? Because I know who she is. And one thing I would say, and I'll keep it short, because she don't want to start talking about her, I can talk all night. But I won't do that for you. I'm just so happy for her and I've seen a lot of things take place over the years with this young lady here. But I will say this right here, this is the happiest time from the moment that we said I do to our last kid. She is so happy to be in Apopka and I'm just so happy to see you here, honey. God bless you.
Awesome, awesome. Anybody else? All right, well, looking for a motion to approve the employment contract for the deputy police chief, Dr. Loretta Quinn Henry.
So moved.
Whoa, that was quick. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'll tell you what, let's, let's, why don't we grab a picture before she leaves? And then we'll get one with the city council, maybe one with family and friends, how about, how about we do that? Okay.
Thank you.
No, her husband, Billy Dean, Commissioner Dean.
Okay, I thought she said it's a teacher, so it's like, okay.
All right, Joe.
Joe Patton, Human Resources Director. Uh, I'm here today to present Mom Taz Bark as requesting appointment as Public Works Director. Uh, Mom Taz has. A extensive career in expertise in engineering and technical initiatives like project management, hydrology, hydrology and groundwater modeling, hydraulic system design, planning and development, construction plans. Personnel management. Organizational behavior and financial and budgeting. I know that you've all read his resume. Uh, he has. A master of arts degree in environmental engineering. He has a master's in business administration and he has a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering. So Mom Taz is actually here tonight, if you would like to ask him questions.
All right, thanks for coming out tonight.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, thank you for the opportunity, I'm glad to be here, I'm not glad to be behind, doctor.
You'll need to speak up.
Oh, I'm, I'm very glad to be here and I really appreciate the opportunity, I just wish that you guys scheduled my case before the chief. Yeah, so. Um, and I guess I, I'm here to ask, answer any questions you have or any concerns that you might have, I think I met with everybody except Commissioner Smith. Um, but again, you know.
Any questions for Mom Taz? I mean, yeah, extensive.
No, I just want to say, uh, first, thank you for making the time to come to each of our individual. Um, agenda reviews, not only to introduce yourself, but also to give us a little background and to let us know that you were being hired as our new public service, uh, director. And you know that I had expressed excitement that you were coming on board, so welcome. And we look forward to working with you and thank you for, um, taking the, the job of public service, uh, director for us, because as you know, uh, we have a lot of projects.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Just that, just briefly, and then, uh, I didn't want to scare you. But you, you were so willing, you were like, I'm here to work and whatever I can do to help you and, and the same thing, you, you, you said to me that if I ever had a question or needed information, that you were definitely available, so I appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else with questions for Mom Taz?
No, I appreciate you taking the time to meet with ye, with me yesterday, and it was a couple of things we discussed. Uh, when we spoke yesterday, you didn't know your start date yet, do you have that?
I think we, we have, I have two start dates, I don't know, I'll, I'll, I'll check with the mayor, see which ones he wants me to pick, but either April fourteenth or April twenty-eighth.
Joe, do you know the, the dates, I know we got, and it's also, uh, it's a graduate, he's, obviously, he's, he's got his own consulting business and so he's.
Well, the date that I have on record is April fourteenth.
Okay.
But I know that you were still in negotiation with that, so.
Does that, does that work? And, and I know it's, and kind of, Joe, once you talk about the, the, I know we started out three da, three days a week, I can't remember.
Yeah, for like, I think three days a week for a month and then, um, full-time, just after that. But I still have like some commitments that I need to kind of, of course, I'll get your permission for that, uh, until I'm, I divest myself completely.
Okay. So in, in that time, because we had discussed that you currently run your own business, that you're going to be transitioning out of that and then into this role.
Yes, sir.
In that time, are we paying you full salary at that time when you're part-time?
I wouldn't think so.
Because the offer letter doesn't state, uh, kind of a graduated system, it states hundred eighty thousand start date.
I'm good with that, but I don't think that's what I think to do.
No, I.
I haven't quite figured that out yet because we didn't know exactly what the schedule was going to be. So if, if it's just a temporary type thing where he's starting part-time, we may have to start him out as hourly and give him the equivalent, uh, in an hourly rate. Uh, but I would have to discuss that with the mayor and the city administrator.
Basically, three, three, you know, three fifths and then four fifths and then five fifths, I mean, it's, yeah, he, so if it's one eighty.
However, it equals out.
Right, so one eighty times, you know, three fifths is whatever.
You could do it as a.
Yeah.
Uh, percentage of the salary.
Yes.
At first, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, because it, that wasn't in the offer letter at all or in any of our addenda, so.
It wasn't because that's all the information I had.
Right, no, I understand that, so that's, that's why I'm asking these questions now, and it seems like we're making the decisions right now too, so. It's interesting, uh, so, and then we discussed too during our meeting briefly that you do have a project actively with the city of Apopka currently, correct?
Yeah, just one right now.
And which one was that?
It's called Hammock at Truck Springs. It's at the tail end, I think we're just going to be getting the COCs next month or so.
Okay.
And hopefully, uh, before I start, that would be done.
Is that, and that's the, the impotence to kind of push this out a little bit further, your start date?
Yeah, I mean, that's, because I don't have control over what, what they're doing on site, I don't have control of the contractors and when I get the information that they're going to provide me, so that was the reason that I had the two start dates, I didn't know which one is better, I'd rather start when this is done, so it won't be any conflict.
And that's kind of my concern and agreement as well, just, I don't want any signs of impropriety in any capacity, I think that's, let's stay away from that as much as possible.
I agree, if you don't mind, I, I don't mind starting at the twenty-eighth as opposed to the fourteenth, just to make sure that we're done. Um, I'm, I'm definitely with you in terms of that, that concern.
Yeah, absolutely, I think, I think, again, I think that's just why there's no signs of impropriety, and then again, it gives you enough time to kind of be able to focus fully on this then at that, I mean, I know there's still going to be a transitionary period. Um, because from my understanding, you do have other projects in other municipalities as well that you need to close out?
Yeah, I mean, there are ones that I'm, uh, basically leading on, so those are the ones that I have to finish off. Like any ongoing projects that I'm not the, the key person on, I'm not going to be dealing with those. But the ones that I am, and unfortunately, they do take, you know, some time to, to kind of close out, and I might not finish them, but at least I have enough time, enough time to kind of get somebody else to take over.
Gotcha, and, and we had discussed, I think you had said June, July in our meeting was kind of where you were looking at, it's kind of some, some of those final meetings.
Yeah, I might have like some, some, uh, commission meetings in different municipalities and, and counties. And I anticipate most of them will be done by June. So it's going to be like one day here, one day there, I'm going to ask permission to take off.
Understood, okay, so then, so it won't be the fourteenth, it'll be the twenty-eighth, and that we're looking at.
Is that okay with you, ma'am?
I'm, I'm fine with the fourteenth, but we want to push it to the twenty-eighth, we can do that.
Well, I think it's appropriate, just if he has projects here. You don't think that's inappropriate at all?
No.
Wow. Public Works is the one that's overseeing all construction and development.
Okay, it's fine.
And he's approving his own projects. I think it just keeps, makes sure that we're on the up and up. It's all in asking.
I appreciate that, actually, I don't want to have any issues like that.
Absolutely, agree. Perfect, the twentieth works, okay.
And I just want to say, welcome, uh, I was out of the country for my agenda review.
Yes, sir.
But I make an appointment to meet with you later on.
Yes, sir, it's my pleasure.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Nope, we already met during the agenda review, we kind of discussed some of my concerns and you're already addressing them, so.
Okay, welcome, thank you.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Okay, well, before we close, I just want to just to let, you know, the, the public as well as the folks here at the DISSO, I made quite a few calls to the county about Mom Taz and, and his work ethic and also his demeanor and, and everything that all the folks that I talked to and from the top all the way down, everybody had nothing but glowing things to say about, about him, and so I think we've got, we got a keeper here, so I am so excited to have him on our, on our team here at the city of Apopka.
Thank you, ma'am.
So with that, I look for a motion to approve the appointment of Mom Taz Bark as the Public Services Director on, what was that, April?
Do we need public comment on this?
Oh, yeah, I guess, I thought I already asked that. Did nobody say that yet? Okay, on, is it April, what?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Mayor? Yes. It, it's Public Works Director.
That, what did I say, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you said Public Services Director.
Okay.
It's actually been changed to Public Works.
Okay, Public Works Director, so, look for motion to approve the appointment of Mom, Mom Taz Bark as a public.
Works.
Works Director on April the twenty-eighth, his start date. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Nice to have you on board.
Thank you.
Oh, and just, just so everybody knows, we, I, I've got in the back of the room is, will be our new city engineer. Um, Vlad, why don't you stand up, I know it's familiar to a lot of you, uh, coming back to Apopka, we, we stole him back away from, uh, from, uh, Seminole County, I know they're, they're still trying to court him, but we're not, you're not going, right?
No, they're trying, but.
So anyway, we, I just thought, you know, it, I put him on there just so people, you know, understood it wasn't something that needed to come to city council, but uh, you know, he, he has a wealth of knowledge, you know, we, when, uh, that we really need right now with all the things, I mean, he, we were, we had, he's already been in a couple of meetings with us and, um, and he was, yeah, that's a sixteen-inch pipe runs from here to here, that's, oh, that's a twelve-inch, and it, so his, his wealth of knowledge, even, it's a little bit of a different, um, uh, position, uh, he, he will definitely be a big addition to Public Works, and so we're, we're so proud to have him on, on as well, so. Vlad, thank you for coming out tonight, I know you didn't need to do that, we appreciate you, so.
Thank you, thank you, good to see you.
Yeah, awesome, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Bradley Williams.
Radley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm here this evening to give an update on the, uh, new athletic summer camp program. In the current budget, additional funding was requested by the Parks and Recreation Department to create, uh, new athletic summer camp programming for the community. Uh, during budget discussions, initial, uh, plan was to approach the schools, two local schools in the area to try and run the program at the schools, uh, during the summer. Staff have been working on, uh, that program model with, with that in mind and has had, uh, meetings with the schools. And throughout that planning, the logistics of operating the program fully in the schools kind of became a challenge. Uh, summer months are obviously months that the schools try and get a lot of facility maintenance programming, uh, and upgrades done. Uh, Papa Middle School's actually planning to redo their gym in June, and sometimes, as we know with facility maintenance, uh, projects, that uh, schedule can float a little bit, so she, uh, the principal over there was hard to commit to, to providing guaranteed gym space for the program. Um, so staff went back, uh, to the drawing board a little bit and, uh, adjusted the model. And the current plan is to operate the camp out of the Fran Carlton Center. Uh, this has a couple benefits of being located next to Katelyn Nelson Park in Edwards Field, the Apopka Splash Pad is right there as well. The new, uh, Apopka Action Sports Park is right next door. And we will still look to utilize Wheatley Elementary School Gym as our indoor gym, uh, location. Uh, we'll, we'll bus the kids over utilizing our bus to the school on certain days and times, uh, to, to have our indoor athletic programming. And just a reminder, on the program, uh, we're looking to be a little more specific, uh, in the individual sports on a week-by-week basis. Uh, so there will, there will be highlight sports each session, uh, which will kind of modify the program a little bit. Uh, the program would run Monday through Fridays, seven-thirty to five-thirty, uh, eight single-week sessions. Resident, uh, fee of one twenty-five and non-resident one fifty. We do have scholarships available for residents. Um, and we're looking to, to have a hundred camper slots initially. There is availability at Fran Carlton to increase that number if registrations do grow, because I know initially we talked about two locations of a hundred each. Um, so if registrations do pick up, uh, and we start approaching that hundred level mark, we can certainly open registration to a higher degree uh, and still fit comfortably at the Fran Carlton Center. So bringing it back to council, because it is a program model change from what we had discussed during budget, uh, time. So available for any questions, and if we, if, if we're good to proceed, we would, uh, look to advertise this camp registration starting this weekend.
Just one question which I did forget to ask you, because I see they're going to kind of be utilizing separate buildings throughout the day. Where's lunch going to be served and how is it going to be served?
So lunch would be back at the Fran Carlton Center, or if we're on a field trip, or at another, we, we'd pack a lunch.
Oh, okay, so they, they will always have their lunch at Fran Carlton?
Fran Carlton will be the base, now if it's a field trip, they might have lunch at the field trip. But Fran Carlton would be the home base, so drop-off would happen at Fran Carlton, pickup would happen at Fran Carlton, and then we would go from there to whatever location we're going to.
And, and just to provide some, uh, further information for the public who is maybe tuning in and maybe in our audiences, um, Fran Carlton has been used all year round for senior, uh, activities, but those, those activities are going to be during the summer camp at the Apopka Community Center.
So during June and July, we would look to move some of the programming that is impacted by this to the seniors, uh, sorry, to the community center. The good news is, so those programs are becoming so large that parking is starting to become more of an issue at the Fran Carlton Center, so there's obviously more parking at the community center. Um, there are some days that we're out on field trips that the program will not need to move, or a program will not need to move, but, um, yeah, staff is, uh, Cindy Edwards, our recreation manager, has already had some conversations with the programmers and some of the participants to kind of give them heads up that this is a possibility.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Bradley? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this?
Leroy Bell, Apopka, uh, just a couple of questions. In the, in the, the way the economy is going today, and especially in Apopka, where the city of Apopka just raised the millage on water and everything else. And I believe probably we'll raise it on the air if you could get the boat. Is it anything that you could do to adjust the, uh, the fees?
So we do have scholarship opportunities, uh, at, at a twenty-five percent reduction or a fifty percent reduction on the fees, and that's for city of Apopka residents, so.
Okay, but then also, you just didn't raise the millage on the, the, you just didn't raise the millage on the city of Apopka residents. You have people over in South Apopka that would like to use, probably would like to use this also, and they get, they getting some pretty hefty water bills over there. Uh, nothing to do, they had nothing to do with what happened with the city with raising this. So would that, uh, pertain to the residents over there also? I just seen you said, uh, uh, there's opportunities for the residents of Apopka. What about those that not residents?
Yeah, so currently, the scholarship program is available only for city of Apopka residents.
So it's, so it's nothing that you can do over, over on that side? But just keep raising the millage on water and everything else? Just a question. There's no answer to that?
No.
Virginia Street, twenty-one nineteenth Palm Vista Drive. Um, I'm excited to see this, um, summer camp program. However, um, what I am concerned about, what I see is, so you're saying a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, I mean, a week? We saying weekly, is that what we're saying, weekly? Okay. Hundred and twenty-five dollars a week. And the, I looked at the agenda, everything is going to be right there, and they get the splash thing, that's free, right? All of the, the skating thing, that's free. I mean, I, I mean, did y'all compare other camps to see what they're charging? Like R D V, this is almost R D V rates right here, this is almost the Magic Sportsplex rates right here. I, and, and this doesn't include their lunches, right? They have to bring their own lunch. Yeah. Hundred and twenty-five dollars a week. And even at fifty percent. That still seems kind of pricey.
So this program is in line with, uh, surrounding camp programs. Uh, the camp does include, the price does include the weekly field trip, the transportation to that field trip, the transportation to and from the, the gym. Um, and all the program materials, staffing, uh, so it was built to. So it was built to include that in mind, so.
So it included field trip, but it never indicated what the field trip was, right?
Correct. So we do have field trips planned, and those will be released once registration opens.
But are they field trip like Universal Studios?
They're larger field trips, not Universal or Disney, but they are larger trips.
Okay. All right. And since I don't actually live in the city of Apopka, I would not be available to have any of the scholarships. And just like Mr. Bell said, the people on the other side of the tracks are not going to be able to have any access to any of the scholarships, right? And, but they're, okay, I'm gonna let that go. I'm not gonna let it go. Because the people on the other side of the tracks are paying the high water bill, as he said. You know, we really need to be a little more fair about that exception there.
And Bradley, what, I know we've got, what, $50,000? What's the budget? And so, I mean, this isn't, this isn't a moneymaker. I mean, we're still.
Yeah, the goal, the goal is for these programs to try and break, get close to a break-even point. And one of the reasons the resident discount is traditionally in place for program, especially recreation programming, is because for the consideration that taxpayers of the city are contributing taxes to the budget that is paying for the program. So that's why typically a discount would go to the city resident that's already paying some taxes that funds this program. So that's typically why these come up, and similar style with the scholarship.
How much money we budgeted for the scholarships?
We have $15,000 a year that come in from Advent Health for scholarships.
That's across all programs?
Yeah, so that could be.
That's an annual fee.
An annual, yeah, any sport, a youth sport program or youth recreation program.
So how much do you apply to this then?
So we, we haven't run out of that funding yet in the year, so we issue that out until it's gone.
And how do you decide who gets it and who gets?
There's an, there's an application process.
Okay.
And that, that's all shared on our website.
So it's income-based? Sorry, I'm sorry. Last question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I can certainly share that with Commissioners.
Okay.
That way you can also get it out to the community.
How much do you expect to spend out of that $15,000 on this?
It's, it's hard to tell.
Did we do this last year?
We do, and it's not, it's not too many that, that apply for this, for these scholarships.
Okay, okay, sorry, thank you.
And let me just say, my daughter does attend a program as well with Wolf Lake Elementary, and it's Monday through Thursday. And it's actually comparable to this, I want to say it's $150, $125. So this is actually, and it offers another day, so.
Are there any multiple children discounts?
There are not, no. And that was one of the challenges with the schools as well. Schools traditionally like to close on Friday. So that's just another logistical challenge of, traditionally we offer a five-day-a-week camp program.
Does the John Bridges Community Center has a program, a summer program that you guys are, they have one as well?
I think they do, but.
The Boys and Girls, is it the Boys and Girls Club that the John Bridges?
Yes, yes.
The Boys and Girls Club? So they have that as well?
Bradley, can you get their numbers just for?
Sure, I can reach out and get.
Because I'm pretty sure, and this is something that I did express to Bradley as well. I think that the goal here is to, I don't think they're going to be turning kids away. I think that if there's a need there, I did speak with Bradley about it, because that was one of my concerns, was making sure that they could afford it. And one of the things that we kind of discussed is just making sure, you know, that's when the scholarship came into play, you know? So I think the goal is to make sure that there is room for the City of Apopka, you know, residents' kids, so.
And yeah, any help getting that information out about scholarships is greatly appreciated. And like I said, I can share that with all of you.
I don't need any help, but I need your checkbook. Every week. I need the check every week.
Sylvester?
Really, I was just trying to get the figures together. We, you say most of the town, we don't have enough people applying for the scholarships, getting the scholarships. So if we know that, what have we put into play for this town to make sure we get a good turnout? Because if this is scholarship, that means quote-unquote, it's a scholarship, it's free. And the, the young people should, well, for them, right?
Yeah, it's discounted.
It's discounted. So how much is the, I must have missed that part. How much?
It's on a sliding scale.
Up to 50%. Well, that sound like me, a youth car salesman, up to 50%. That could be $5, you know? So do we got, do we got actual figures? Because I'm just trying to figure out here. A lot of times we put on events and we say, well, it's just for the uplift of the community, we're not planning on making any money. It's just bringing everybody together and we enjoy love and camaraderie, you know, family. So with this here, what is the goal of it, you know? Is it, is it, we want to get the people, we want to make sure? If I say I got 100 campers, well, it'd be great for me to come out and see 100 campers out there enjoying and having fun. That's what the program, that's what we trying to do. So we can stick to that. But then what, what Mr. Bell was talking about on the other side of the tracks. How can you just say no respect? We charging the same water bill we charging our citizens, and they come over here and shop. They don't go to Orlando to shop, they come right over here and shop. So when we do these things, you know, let's try to, let's try to have a little moral concept that, you know, we trying to embrace everybody. You know, you hear some people say that, well, I don't like it being called South Apopka. It's just Apopka. Well, if that's the case, let's make it Apopka. And let's try to uplift and, and back to what my gentleman said here earlier, the annexation. That's long overdue. Commissioner Smith, that was your baby. By any means necessary, no cost is too much. Are those just words we pass for the moment? Let's get it annexed in and let's make it one Apopka. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the athletic summer camp program.
Subtle.
Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Williams, I'll meet with you separately. I want to just go through some of the funding stuff and see how I can maybe add to the scholarship side of things. We'll forget this out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ordinance number 3,094.
Ordinance number 3,094. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute 171.044. The here and after described land situated in being in Orange County, Florida. Owned by BSC Rock Springs East LLC, located at 2501 Rock Springs Road, comprising 9.63 acres more or less. Providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to adopt ordinance number 3,094.
Subtle.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Oh, he did say that.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
He's going.
Okay, motion carries four to one with Commissioner Nesta in opposition.
Thank you for enunciating properly.
Okay, next up, ordinance number 3,095.
Ordinance 3,095. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from residential very low suburban to mixed use for certain real property owned by Adventist Health System, Sunbelt Inc., generally located on the southeast corner of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, comprising 5.56 acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
No changes? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to adopt ordinance number 3,095.
So that was the one that you recused yourself. Is it still that way or?
I'm just gonna do it, but no, it's, I'm not subject to it.
Subtle.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I want to recuse myself and I'll send in a notice. Okay, ordinance number 3,096.
Ordinance 3,096. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional to KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, and an assignment of Village Center District Overlay for certain real property owned by Adventist Health System, Sunbelt Inc., generally located on the southeast corner of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, comprising 5.56 acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
This was the second meeting? Oh, it was, I'm sorry. It was.
Okay.
Looking at it.
Anybody from the public? Okay, if not, close the public hearing. Look for motion to adopt ordinance number 3,096.
Subtle.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will recuse myself, so motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Next up, ordinance number 3,100.
Ordinance number 3,100. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending Chapter 54 Retirement Systems. Amending Article 4 Police Officers Retirement System, Section 54-120 Membership, Section 54-127 Besting, Section 54-146 Deferred Retirement Option Plan, Section 54-147 Re-Employment After Retirement, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and Setting an Effective Date.
Any changes, Chief? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to adopt ordinance number 3,100.
Subtle.
Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2025-13.
Resolution 25, 2025-13. A resolution of the City of Apopka, Florida, related to capital improvements for roads and sidewalks located in the Emerson Park neighborhood. Providing for the funding of such improvements through the imposition and collection of non-advalorem special assessments. Describing the proposed Emerson Park Assessment Area, estimating the cost of improvements, describing the method of assessing the cost and benefits to the, of the improvements against real property that will be specifically benefited thereby. Directing preparation of a preliminary assessment role, establishing a public hearing to consider imposition of the assessments, directing the provision of notice and certain other matters in connection with therewith, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Susan. Good afternoon, Mayor, evening, and Commissioners. I have Mr. Christopher B. Rowe with Brian Miller Olive. Our bond counsel here to give you a presentation in regards to the initial assessment resolution for the Emerson Park subdivision. Also in attendance, I have Sarah Denzy with our Financial Advisors Office.
Thank you, Blanche, and good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Chris Rowe, and with the law firm Brian Miller Olive, and we serve as bond counsel for the city. I prepared the resolution you have before you for consideration this evening. This resolution starts the process for imposing special assessments to fund road improvements for the Emerson Park subdivision. The presentation shouldn't take much more than five or six minutes. I'm glad to answer questions if we go along or how the commission, council sees fit. How do I advance this slides? Is it this one here? Very good. Just for, I know the council is familiar with the project, but just for purposes of context and brief background, Emerson Park is a.
Can you speak just a little louder?
Yes, is that better?
Yeah.
I'll try to speak louder as I go through. Very good. So the Emerson Park subdivision is primarily residential, it's single-family residential units and townhomes, but there is some commercial use there as well. It's a platted community. The, as I understand it, the intent for the community was originally that it would be a gated community, but there was no gate ever installed because there are those business uses at Okoye Apopka Road primarily. The gate wouldn't interfere with access to the business uses. If you look at the plaque, the roadway in the neighborhood is designated as Track A. And Track A is owned by the Homeowners Association. It's not a publicly dedicated road. It's open to the public because there's no gate, but it's owned by the HOA. So the HOA has maintenance responsibility for the road, for the sidewalks that are part of the right-of-way, and for certain alleyways that serve as access points to the rear of the residential properties. Not all the residential property, just some of them have that alleyway. And the HOA is basically unable to facilitate repair of the roadway, which has fallen into some disrepair over time. It's aging, it's deteriorating, it needs some improvements. And the HOA has basically asked the city to assist with the process of fixing the road. Basically, the plan is for the city to impose special assessments against each of the residential properties within the neighborhood to fully fund the cost of repairing the roads and the sidewalks. I say fully funding, the HOA also has certain cash available to it, which it would contribute to the cost of the project. Some of that cash is derived from an agreement between the HOA and the commercial uses, which are comprised of Track G on the plat, by which the Track G parcels have agreed to pay a share of the improvement costs. So they would not be included in the overall assessment program because they are cash-funding their share of the road improvements. Upon completion of the improvements, the roads and the sidewalks would be dedicated to the city. They'd become owned by the city and open to public operation and usage. The alleyways that I mentioned earlier, they would be retained by the HOA. The HOA would have ongoing maintenance responsibility for the alleyways. So brief overview on special assessments. These are just charges that the city can impose on property in a given area to fund an improvement or a service that benefits that area. You can choose to fund all of the project cost or a portion of it through the assessment. Assessments are sometimes called non-advalorem assessments when they are collected on the annual property tax bill mailed by the tax collector each November. Three primary legal requirements under Florida law for special assessments. Whatever your funding has to convey a special benefit to the property that's subject to the charge. And road improvements have been determined a number of times by our court system as conveying the special benefit necessary to support an assessment. The formula for calculating the amount of the assessment for each property is not set by state statute, it's left up to local discretion. So you, as the governing council, you can choose a system of apportioning the cost that works for your community, best meets your needs, the city's needs. The only restriction is that it has to be fair and reasonable, and by that, I mean, it's not arbitrary. For road improvement project, a common way of apportioning the cost is based on trip generation. The more trips a particular parcel generates and usage of the road, it would be expected to pay a little bit higher assessment. If you instead chose to apportion the cost on the basis of, for example, the color of the houses, where blue houses pay one rate, red houses pay another rate, that would not meet the legal standard. That would be an arbitrary way of sharing the cost. You have to share it in some way that makes sense for the improvement you're funding. So road, trips and generation on the road are often used because they do meet that legal standard. The last requirement is due process. Before you can impose a special assessment against properties, you have to give the owners of the property notice that you're thinking about doing it, and then invite them in for a public hearing where they can address you and voice any objections they might have. So the assessment process basically includes developing the cost estimate and the revenue requirement. In other words, figuring out how much the project is going to cost, and then of that amount, how much you want to recover through the special assessment. The costs that you're going to recover can include the design and construction costs, but they can also include the cost you incur for setting up the assessment program, and also for financing the amount of the project over time through a bank loan or issuance of a bond or a note. You typically want to estimate conservatively when you're developing your cost estimate, because that serves as the premise for the amount of the assessment you impose. Very, very easy in the future to reduce the amount of the assessment if you don't need as much money as you originally estimated for the project. However, if you have to go up and you need more money in the future, you have to basically repeat the assessment process anew. So always better to conservatively estimate how much you're going to need and assess based on that conservative estimate. Once you know your project cost, you work out how you're going to share the costs among all the affected properties, and you identify the area that's subject to it. In other words, which are the parcels that receive the special benefit, which don't. You refine your assessment apportionment methodology and you select the method of collecting it. And that's typically done by tax bill collection. You include the installments of the payments on the annual property tax bill. Also, you need to figure out how many years you're going to collect it over. That's completely up to your discretion. You could collect it over a five-year term, 10, 15, 20, whatever works best for your community and the project at hand. Then you adopt an initial assessment resolution, like the one you have for consideration this evening, that describes the project and the assessments, and schedules the public hearing. You then mail notice of the public hearing to each affected property owner, telling that property owner, here's how much we propose assessing your property. Here's the time, date, place of the public hearing where you can come in and make comments about the project and the assessments. Then you conduct the public hearing, and at the conclusion of the public hearing, you adopt the second resolution, it's known as the final assessment resolution, which imposes the assessments. This slide breaks down how the cost estimate was determined for the project and the revenue requirements to be recovered through the assessment. We started with the construction cost a little bit north of $2 million, $2,32,000. And I believe this figure has previously been shared with council during prior presentations. Again, in the interest of being conservative, we added a construction contingency of about 10%. Then we subtracted out from that amount, the amounts to be contributed by the HOA, again, the Track G. Again, the Track G share of the roadway improvements just shy of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Additional cash the HOA has on hand to contribute, an amount of sixty-four thousand dollars. That gives us a net construction cost of two million, twenty-four thousand dollars and some change. To that, you add additional costs the city will incur in financing the project. It's not just the pure construction costs that we're assessing for. We're also going to factor in financing costs. When you take out a loan or issue a note to borrow the money for the project, there are certain costs that go along with that. You're going to pay issuance expenses. Sometimes you're going to be required to set aside certain monies in a reserve fund. So if you need to, you can draw from it to make your debt service payments. Sometimes you would want to borrow money in advance so you can pay your first interest payment on the loan. That's called capitalized interest. We factor that in as well. And then there's a number of miscellaneous expenses, such as developing the assessment program, the legal survey to identify the alleyways, which will be excluded from the public dedication, et cetera, for a total finance cost through the assessment of two million, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. That's basically what the city will be assessing for in this project. And then, once you know how much you're going to recapture through the assessment, you figure out, well, how are we going to allocate it among the properties that receive the benefit of the project? And that being the residential properties in the Emerson Park subdivision. We took that two, eight, two-point-eight million dollar figure, and we essentially amortized it over a fifteen-year term. That means we're going to take out a loan repayable over fifteen years at an assumed interest rate of five percent. Now, I know in some of the earlier presentations, there was some discussion about a longer term, a twenty-year term instead of fifteen. Based on the advice of the city's financial advisor, who I will let speak if the council so wishes, it can be difficult to obtain a bank loan for a term of twenty years. Banks are typically comfortable going out for a period of fifteen years, not so much in twenty years. If we advertise a loan through an RFP, seeking a twenty-year loan, chances are we might not get any, if any, responses. Whereas if it's instead advertised for fifteen years, much more likely to get a range of responses, which would result ultimately in a lower interest rate. Of course, the shorter term does mean the payments would be higher than they would be over a twenty-year term, but it's part and parcel of public finance, and sometimes you have to do what the market offers. And in this case, we think the market will offer fifteen years. So based on a fifteen-year term, five percent interest, the annual carry in the way of debt service, the principal and interest payments of two, two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. Then you want to add to that the collection cost the city will incur through using the assessment vehicle. Each year, you're going to have certain expenses that go along with the assessments. Part of that is the tax collector's fee. These charges will be collected by the tax collector. The tax collector typically takes some off the top to compensate him or her for the fact that they're assisting the city bring in this money every year. Also, when they're collected on the tax bill, assessments are subject to the four percent early payment discount. If you pay your tax bill in November, you get a four percent discount. If you pay in December, you get a three percent discount, et cetera. So we factor that in, because if you didn't account for the four percent discount, you could come up short in the amount you need to collect for your debt service payments. That gives a total estimated annual cost of two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars, six-hundred-and-one, that needs to be collected through the assessments. So really, you just take that two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars and you divide it by the number of assessment units. And we are recommending that you do this on a per-dwelling unit basis. That's because each of the, 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 the single-family residential and the townhomes in Emerson Park are substantially similar as far as how much square footage and occupant capacity they have. They're reasonably expected to generate the same number of trips, whether it's a townhome or a single-family residential property. So each property will pay basically one charge, the same amount. When you divide those total, the total you have to collect by the total dwelling units of five hundred, the annual rate comes out to be five-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars a year for the fifteen-year term. And if somebody pays in November, they're going to pay less than that, they'll get the four percent discount. And again, anytime you're doing this sort of calculation, that, that, that annual payment figure is always a function of the total amount you're borrowing, the term of years and the interest rate you're going to get your loan at. This is a timeline showing the steps for implementation of the assessment, starting with tonight's meeting and adoption of the initial assessment resolution. If the resolution is adopted, then by March twenty-seventh, we'll publish notice of a public hearing and we'll mail notice to each of the affected property owners regarding the public hearing. April sixteenth, council will convene for a public hearing to consider adopting the initial, excuse me, the final assessment resolution. There'll also be a resolution presented which approves a funding agreement between the city and the HOA. I mentioned earlier that the HOA is contributing cash, its cash toward the project. There'll be an agreement between the city and the HOA directing how that cash is applied and the amount of the contribution, et cetera. Also, because it's currently, the road is currently in private ownership by the HOA, we need a construction easement from them in order to be able to do the work. So we'll get approval for a construction easement at that time. And we'll also facilitate public dedication of the road upon completion of the improvements. Typically, we set this up so that there is a deed of the road to the city, which is conveyed and held in escrow until the project is completed. Once the project is completed, the escrow is broken and the deed goes into effect. You would then accept the dedication of the, of the road. By May eighth, we expect to obtain bank loan proposals to finance the cost. Shortly after that, April sixteenth meeting with the assistance of the financial advisor, we'll seek bank loan RFPs. And the way the banks compete in these things is they offer the lowest possible interest rate, right? So we'll typically choose the one that offers the lowest interest rate, which will be a benefit to the property owners. At the June, excuse me, the May twenty-first council meeting, we'll come back and we'll make a recommendation as far as which bank should be selected. And then following meeting on June fourth, you'll adopt a resolution approving the bank loan with the selected lender. We'll also bring a series of closing documents for the signature of the mayor and the council, approving the loan essentially. And then the funding will occur on June sixth. We have accelerated the timeline as best we can, so we get those monies in hand for the project by June sixth, close on the bank loan. Then in November, the first installment of the, the assessment will appear on the property tax bill for each of the affected property owners. And then at some point in the future, construction will be completed, the road will be dedicated to the city for public use. And at that time, once the construction is completed and all costs are known, we may end up adjusting the amount of the assessment. I mentioned earlier that the assessment is premised on a conservative, in other words, a high estimate of the total cost. We built in contingency there, so we don't have to redo the process. If the project cost ends up coming in less than what we're estimating, then we reduce the assessment at that time. You can do that one of two ways. You can lower the annual amount you're collecting for the fifteen-year term, or you can continue to collect at the higher rate, but effectively shorten the term over which you collect. Very, very similar to paying an extra hundred bucks on your monthly mortgage. Eventually, you shorten the term of the mortgage. Some additional detail regarding the initial assessment resolution before you. It describes the improvements in the area to be assessed. It includes legislative findings regarding the special benefit conveyed by the project to the affected properties. It establishes the amount to be assessed, describes the apportionment method, and how it's fair and reasonable to use trips and essentially per-dwelling units for this project. Schedules the public hearing for April sixteenth, directs the notice to all affected property owners, provides for collection of installments on the annual tax bill, and specifies certain processes for how you will administer the assessment each year over the fifteen-year term of collection. And with that, I'm glad to take any questions the council may have.
Any questions for Chris?
I have a few.
Sir?
Thank you for this presentation and taking the time to do this. If possible, are you able to send us a copy of this presentation? Is it? I didn't see it in here. Is it in the updated one? You know, I love updated ones versus the ones we actually get in the beginning. Okay. Either way, the, is there any prepayment provision or penalty? And then there'd be a, a discount with that if a homeowner wants to pay the flat fee upfront?
Ye- yes, sir. So whether or not to offer a prepayment option is local discretion. You can, and many projects do. However, this project is relatively small as far as the amount that's being borrowed for and the number of payers who are paying into the system. When the banks look at the RFP and determine whether or not they want to submit a proposal, one of the things they're going to consider is, well, is the loan big enough to make it worth our while to submit a bid? If they are aware that, hey, it's five hundred units now, but it could drop down three fifty, four hundred over time because of prepayments, it might affect their willingness to provide the loan in the first place. So at least as currently written, we've set it up so that it would not have a prepayment feature. If it, the council wishes, we can add that to it, and we can add it a couple of different ways. One, you could add it so that it's available before you incur the expense of the loan, so that property owners who want to avoid the financing costs could basically pay upfront cash. It does reduce the number of payers, though, which could make it a little harder to get the loan. Or you could make it so that after the loan is incurred, if someone has a windfall and they just want to get off from under the assessments in year two or three, they could pay it off at that time by paying off the amount of principal at that time, plus the interest due to the next prepayment date. Those are common features in capital assessment projects like this. But we determined after discussion internally that because of the relatively small size of the loan, it might make more sense to forego that, just everybody essentially pay for the fifteen-year term.
Okay, so that may not be an option to the residents, then in exchange for a lower interest rate, possibly?
Being able to finance it at all.
Okay. Wow, so that could be like a make-up range for lenders.
Again, because of the relatively small, if this was a forty-million-dollar project, then we'd probably have a lot more in the way of interest from the lenders to provide a loan. Relatively small loan, relatively small number of assessment payers. I'll let the financial advisor speak to it. We can certainly build that in, and we can do so at the next meeting or at any meeting thereafter. We can add that. If we go out and we get the loan and the banks show interest in accepting prepayments, we can add that as a feature then. But as written, the resolution says we're not going to accept prepayments.
Okay, understood. And then, if I heard correct, or you may not have said it specifically, but hinted at it, the, if the total cost comes in lower, we can then reduce the, the assessment from there. Is it one of those, we need to go higher because we can go lower, but we can't go higher?
So I, I mentioned the mailed notices that we'll be sending. A, a strict legal requirement is that notice has to tell each property owner what the maximum amount they could be faced with. You can always come down later from that maximum amount you included in the notices. You can do so on consent agenda. There's nothing to it, no problem with lowering it. But if you underestimate the cost and you need to assess more to fully fund the project, you basically have to repeat the process anew. The mailed notice and the public hearing.
Okay.
So the way that most communities address that circumstance is by estimating high, building in lots of contingency, knowing, you don't want to go too high, you're going to make it, you know, a burden or unacceptable to property owners or have them see the notice and say, oh, this is too high, I'm going to come to the meeting and complain. But you, you, you structure it so it's got that conservative nature, knowing that if certain line items in the budget, like the capitalized interest figure I mentioned, or the, the debt service reserve fund, if we don't ultimately need those, that's going to come off the assessment, and the assessment will be reduced commensurately so that they're not paying for something they're not getting the benefit of. One legal requirement of special assessments is that it's not, not meant to be at all a profit generator. There's no benefit to the city coffers for imposing the assessment. If the project cost comes in lower than the estimate, you must reduce the assessment to meet the actual project cost.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, if you can go back to cover the, the math section of this was, and just walk me through the math again, please.
Yep, there's a couple slides.
Understanding this side of it, if you can go to the next slide. So if I, if I multiply five ninety-one times five hundred, isn't there five oh four, five hundred and four? It's five hundred even. Okay. So it's at, if I do the five ninety-one times fifteen, so the fifteen years, it puts it at a total cost to the per-unit of eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five. I, I, explain to me, I guess, the math backed me into that, because in the ordinance itself, or the, the paperwork, it said the total cost, I want to say it was fifty-six hundred, fifty-six sixty-two? Show me the delta, I guess, or why we're getting that.
Yes, sir. It, it, I often use the example of a mortgage. If I'm borrowing two hundred thousand dollars to purchase my house, then that's the principal I'm borrowing. But by the time the, the loan is finished, I will have paid considerable interest over the thirty years or the fifteen-year term. So what I pay back is not two hundred thousand dollars, it's closer to two seventy or three hundred.
God, I thought that the fifty-six sixty-two was included above that.
That's the pure principal, before adding in the interest that they'll pay over time by carrying it for fifteen years.
Okay, I understand.
It's about fifty-six sixty-two.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that makes sense then. And then I guess it would be, I would like to see if there's options for prepayment, but I totally understand that that limits our possibly ability to lend at all, or the pool of lenders and attractiveness of the terms itself.
Sometimes, sir, when we issue the RFP, seeking the bank loan responses, we will include a statement there that the city would very much appreciate having options that allow for prepayment of the assessments. We put it back to them, and then you, you might get a few that actually are okay with that. They might say we'd like it before a certain date, you know, or at any time.
Or X-a-date, or, yeah.
Sometimes the way they do it is, yes, you, you can prepay your assessment anytime with a two percent penalty.
Sure.
Or you can make prepayments once you have accumulated twenty thousand dollars in, in prepayments, right? So then, a little tricky, because you have to figure out, well, how long is it going to take us when you don't know? Some details, we, we can work through it. It's a desired council to have that feature.
I, I think it would be beneficial, I mean, it's for everybody to decide, and obviously the homeowners as well. I just, to have the options, I think, is, is valuable.
Thank you.
Those are all my questions. Thank you for that.
Any other questions for Chris?
My, my only question was, I noticed the closing date is June sixth.
Yes.
So does that mean the project cannot start until after the closing date?
Till we get the money, correct.
Till we get the money.
Okay.
Now, I, I do know that this is a project that's strongly supported by the residents who are responsible for paying the assessment. In fact, they, they approached the city and asked for this. So you, you have the strong support of the folks who are actually paying the assessment. But nonetheless, you, because this is an assessment-funded project, you, you want to go through the steps to actually impose the assessment and make sure you can have that money coming in before you start incurring costs that if the assessment doesn't materialize, for whatever reason, we get to the public hearing, you decide not to do it, now you've already gone on the hook for the cost of the project, but you don't have that revenue source in place to pay for it. So we, we typically advise, wait until the assessment plays out. Once you have the assessment placed, we can move relatively quickly to get the loan done. Here, I think it's six, seven weeks later, you'll have the money after we do the April sixteenth here.
All right, any other questions?
I, I have a question for our finance director. You had given us sort of a, a chart of different dates.
Yes, ma'am.
Does this change, and obviously it's changed.
No, that's, that's consistent with the revised chart that was sent out.
Oh, that's, you sent me the revised chart?
Yes, ma'am, and then I answered your question and showed you the highlights of what changed.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for, okay, anybody from the public which should speak? Is Emerson Park in favor?
Hi, Mayor, Commissioners, Blanche. Thank you, everyone. We are definitely on board, we're in favor. We appreciate all of your efforts with this project. I know it's taken some time to get here, and I very much appreciate it. I will speak on just the point that you're making, Commissioner, Commissioner Nesta. I don't foresee many of our community paying that eight thousand upfront. When we did another special assessment for stucco repair a couple of years ago, we had less than twenty out of the five hundred pay upfront. So I think with the change in the economy, I, I, I foresee even less. So if it is going to possibly hurt us, I don't think we should.
No, totally agree with you, and I don't want to force that out of you. It's one of those, like, I like, I always like options, especially for each individual homeowner. Has unique scenarios, if they want to sell, pay it off, whatever it may be.
Yeah.
But if it hurts or slows down or makes it more expensive, absolutely not. Let's just keep the train going, so.
Yes.
Absolutely.
That's exactly what I wanted to do.
Yeah. Just one comment on what she was talking about. When the stucco repair, it was a special assessment, so it was the responsibility of the homeowner. So they had to pay it eventually anyhow. This is part of the tax bill, so it's an assessment on the property. So if five years from now I sell my place, it transfers over to the next person, so. Just, just being the cheap person I am, why would I want to prepay eight thousand dollars that I'm never going to be able to get back that part that the next person would be paying?
Well, also being the frugal person, I have my buying your unit, I'm going to say I need you to pay that off before I buy it. That's the only, only thing. But again, I don't want to slow this down, I don't want to ruin opportunities or the ability to get an attractive rate. So absolutely not, whatever we can do to get it going.
Okay, anybody have any questions for us?
No, pretty good. Okay, cool.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
And we're on step twenty-two now, I think it is?
Somewhere in there.
All right, anybody else from the public?
Forty-five, forty-six?
Anybody else from the public which should speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-five dash thirteen.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries naturally.
Thank you.
All right, Resolution Twenty Twenty-five dash fourteen.
Resolution Twenty Twenty-five dash fourteen. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, determining the necessity and public purpose of certain properties within the city for right-of-way and infrastructure improvements and other necessary lawful purposes, and authorizing the acquisition of those certain properties in Apopka, Florida by eminent domain or through negotiation, directing out and authorizing the city administrator to take all necessary actions to carry out the aim of this resolution. Authorizing the city attorney to initiate eminent domain- Authorizing the city attorney to initiate eminent domain proceedings to acquire the necessary interest in the properties, providing for legislative findings, providing for conflicts, severability and an effective date.
All right, Mayor and Council, this resolution is not unlike the one we had last time for the Public Safety Building. It authorizes us to proceed with whatever is necessary to get the property. Obviously, as I said before, my preference would be to negotiate a resolution and not have to go through court proceedings. But we can't do anything in terms of court proceedings or anything else other than asking if they'll sell without this resolution. So this is a, as I mentioned to others, it's a checkbox that we can have so that if we can't get to a point of resolution with the various property owners, and this is for the Kelly Park Road expansion, that we will be able to proceed because the road construction will commence relatively soon. We need the right of way to make it happen. And so this essentially, and we've been told by the co-developers on what's called the pioneering agreement, that for at least some of the property owners, us having this resolution would help them negotiate with the owners to get us the property. We'll see if that happens, but either way, we can proceed now and that's the purpose of the resolution.
Okay, any questions for Cliff?
I just want to kind of disclose that one of the brokers that represents the property owners that are involved, the broker sits on a board that, we sit on the board together, so I'm very well aware of the issue between Wal, uh, Wild Oaks, because I also had a conversation with Wild Oaks Joe Beninati. And then I have the other broker that sits, that is representing the two property owners. So I, I don't know if I should vote.
It doesn't, it newer to your special loss, private gain or loss, so no.
I'm sorry.
It doesn't put money in your pocket?
No.
It doesn't put you at risk of losing anything?
Anything in my pocket.
That's the definition of a conflict. It has to adhere to your special private gain or loss.
Okay. Well, thank you for
Yes, ma'am.
Giving me that explanation because I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, any other questions for Cliff? Not close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries now. All right, Council reports. Commissioner Anderson, why don't you get us started?
So I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to Radley. Radley, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. On behalf of Jalen Carter, his entire family in the community, different people that actually reached out to me about the event for Jalen Carter. He's very honored for the city to do something so, so prestigious for him. So he wanted me to say thank you to the city, thank you to everyone, and it meant a lot to him. In addition to that, and also your team, you guys were amazing. I am working on a pop, on an expungement and ceiling clinic with Legal AIDS Society of Orange County Bar Association. So I'll have that date in more detail. So they do these clinics every few months in Orlando and I want here in Apopka. So I'm working with them and I know there is a need for that in the community. So I look forward to that clinic. I'll get with the powers that be in regards to a location. So just stand by and I'm excited about that event. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Blaskis.
First, I want to say thank you to our finance director for helping that one resident who, um, from Peabody Lakes, where you were able to negotiate, help negotiate the bill only because we went out to verify that he did have a water leak. And I know he sent to you a thank you, but I also wanted to publicly say that between public services and yourselves, you went over and above and the resident was satisfied with getting his bill, which was over a thousand dollars, down to a hundred and fifty dollars. Once you verified that it was a leak that caused the water. So I wanted to say thank you with that. Again, I just want to say congratulations to the three new employees that we have in the city. All, all needed, which was our deputy chief, Levetta Quinn Henry, our Public Works Director and Val, Valdemir. Valdemir, welcome back. Um, the other thing I had here was, okay, I wanted to ask the mayor, I did get an email from Representative Webster where he said, Congressman Daniel Webster's office is accepting for consideration pro, 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 problematic language and community project funding requests for FY twenty twenty-six and it's a deadline for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Did we have any?
We're working on it. Yeah.
Okay. That was that. And then we have, oh, okay, I did receive an email from the president of the Apopka Historical Museum. She'll be hosting a Women's History Month at the museum on the twenty-seventh at five o'clock. And the special guest speaker will be Ms. Carol Burkett, the Deputy Chief of Staff for Orange County. And on that note, I just want to say since the month of March is for, to recognize the women leadership, I just want to pay honor to all our women employees for the City of Apopka. Just the other day, I verified how many employees we do have currently between part-time and full-time. We have six hundred employees, of which a hundred and thirty-four women who are employees. So they are the backbone and the heart of the city and I want to say thank you to them for their service and their dedication for the success of our city. And I want to recognize all the women that work for the City of Apopka, just to say thank you for their service. And that's it for me.
Commissioner Smith?
I just want to say the event for Jalen Carter was a great event, well-attended and appreciated by residents. And so I want to say thank you to Commissioner Anderson and the city staff for all that you did to make that event a great event. Uh, I, I do want to ask, do we have a status on the border lake project?
Yeah, I'll get, let me do it on a, yeah, a little bit. We're, we're, we're making progress. We're gaining.
All right. And the other one is the Community Development Director. What's the status on that position?
We, I don't even know if it's, it's not even been, is it advertised now, Joe? I don't think so. Okay. Are you talking about economic development or, or community development?
Both.
Either one?
Uh, community development. That, that, the last word I got, we weren't going to advertise that at this moment.
I was trying to get the Economic Development Director in place first and then I'd like to, yeah.
All right, so that one hasn't advertised?
Well, yes, we had an Economic Development Director. We agreed on everything other than she wasn't going to move here. And at that point, I, we gave our, our thought was give her a year to move here from the East Coast and
She wasn't from the East Coast, was she?
Yeah.
Mayor, I believe.
Of the East Coast of Florida?
Right, right, right.
Okay, that was like the East Coast. Okay.
So on that, the economic development, we, we are re-advertising that. I'm re, we reevaluated it, the job description. And I'm actually developing new qualifying questions so we can, you know, more effectively advertise and get some quali, get qualified applicants that know exactly what we're looking for so that they can answer, so that they can develop their resumes according to what we're looking for.
All right.
And, and I think it's, it's great that we have a deputy chief coming in and this is Women's History Month. That's going to become our police chief and be the first female police chief for the City of Apopka. So I think it's very great that we did it during this month. That's all I have.
Cool, all right, absolutely. Commissioner Nesta?
It's funny, you speak about decorum, I have a hard time actually applying it. I'll move on though. What I have, Office Hours, just a consistent reminder that Office Hours every Thursday here at City Hall from eleven AM to one PM. It's an open call for anybody that wants to come discuss anything and everything that will push our city forward and, and benefit our city. And I always like to reference the ordinance thirty-eighty-one that I've had residents reach out and say they feel uncomfortable, they feel they could be attacked for that ordinance. And if you do feel that way, it's, I hear you and I'm happy to make accommodations for you, meet you anywhere else you'd like to meet. Just give me a call and reach out and I'm happy to make those accommodations. That's all I got.
Okay. Jacob, nothing? Okay, Cliff?
Well, far be it for me to drag out a meeting, but I do want to talk about CRAs for a minute. You know, when I do, I talk about, I wear two hats. One is the General Counsel of the FRA and the other happens to be whatever CRA I also represent in this case of Apopka. So what you need to know is that, not unusually so, there is a bill afoot to attack CRAs. It's something that FRA deals with quite frequently. The Senate bill is twelve forty-two. It's actually of the two, not bad comparatively speaking. The House bill, on the other hand, nine ninety-one is really bad for CRAs in this regard. Both bills say that CRAs will come to an end no later than twenty twenty, twenty forty-five of October, which for Apopka is okay because your CRA will be over by then anyway. Uh, but for other cities, that would be much shorter than they would otherwise have to do CRA kinds of things. But the bigger issue in the House bill is that it says that there will be no new funding of projects and no new projects after October of twenty twenty-five. So if you haven't, and if not in the budget for this fiscal year, and it's not a project that's underway before October of twenty twenty-five, that is the end of your spending on CRAs. The optimistic notice is that it may be that the Senate version, which doesn't contain that portion, may be the more likely to get through. It, it would simply include the end of CRAs in twenty forty-five. That's the hope. But we have, from the FRA perspective, been involved in multiple phone calls with the lobbyists that we retain to address this issue. And I am cautiously optimistic. I am told by that same lobbyist that the problem with predictions is that we are not yet at the horse trading time. I ask, what is the horse trading time? That is when one, one house, the House in this case, and the Senate have different things and different priorities. And so if the House wants its version of the bill worse than it wants something else, and the Senate wants something else that the House doesn't worse, then they will sometimes swap. And so if that happens, then we could be stuck with the worst version of the bill. So that's why I'm not predicting. But I'm cautiously optimistic we'll get the Senate version or something less onerous. But if this, if the House bill gets passed and is signed, then effectively, I don't have to be the, a general counsel of the FRA for a whole lot longer. And you don't have a CRA a whole lot longer, neither does anybody else. So that's it.
And Cliff, is, is your, is the lobbyist, is it Ron Book? Is that your?
Uh, no, no, it's Ryan Matthews at Gray Robinson.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So what would happen with the, I guess, the funds that are already, if we haven't allocated them?
They get returned to the county.
Okay.
With, with projects still available to put on and without that provision, you could allocate them to a new project or a different project.
So as long as they're allocated?
And budgeted in this fiscal year.
Okay.
So look for an amendment.
Yeah, I was just about to say, that's an amendment I can deal with if we have to.
All right. So under the mayor's report, big shout out to Commissioner Anderson and putting that, the, helping put that event on along with our Parks and Rec team. That was amazing. I had a lot of, a lot of Eagles fans there. Uh, it was, it was a great, a great event. Obviously this Saturday, March twenty-second, nine to twelve is the Apopka Action Sports Park ribbon cutting. So come on out nine o'clock and be a part of the ribbon cutting. As, as I gave on your, on your chair, should have the bill analysis on the, the SB twelve forty-two. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and schedule a CRA board meeting on April sixteenth. We've already had, I've had two meetings with Radley and Blanche and Bobby to talk about, you know, we don't, the last thing we want to do is send money back to the county. So we, what I'd like to do is they're putting together, Radley and, and Bobby are putting together spending priorities for the CRA. Blanche is going to give us where we are and what we've already committed. So that we come to the sixteenth, I'd like to have the CRA board and then obviously the following, the following week, or excuse me, uh, May second, whenever our next commission meeting is, I want to have that in place so that if it happens, I can guarantee you that something's going to happen with CRAs without, yeah, so I'd rather be prepared, have every, have our induction row that we've got all the money committed so that we don't, we don't lose any of those dollars. So just put on your calendar, April twenty, or April sixteenth. So we'll do a, a CRA meeting, six PM, right before council. So if you'll put that on your calendars. As, as, as we talk about that, I'm going to Tallahassee next week. Got a couple of things I need to get, try to get a combo. Got a couple of things, we're trying to get funded as well as, I'm sitting on a, on a statewide board up there and so it's also League of Cities week, so be a big week. And the last thing is, is Mark, stand up there, Mark. First ice cream in the cup yesterday and we had a big turnout at Dairy Queen. So it's his, his signature event. You, you done, you done good there, fella. So appreciate you, yeah. All right. And with that.
Will you be shutting off comments?
Yes.
All right, then I need sixty seconds to set up, please.